Call them in order for the July 11, 2017 study session. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
The record will reflect that Mayor Pro Tem Duffield has an excused absence.
Thank you. Any questions on consent calendar from the dice? All right, seeing none, we have a proclamation here presented to Fast Eddie and Mr. O'Neil. Councilman O'Neil is going to be providing that.
So, I'll read the proclamation. We'll take pictures and then you're more than welcome to say a few words if you'd like. And I'll also note very briefly that Fast Eddie actually cuts the hair of our city attorney, Councilmember Herdman, and Councilmember Pieter, and Councilmember O'Neil. So, this is, this is, thank you. So, and real briefly, the reason we-
But some of us have more hair than others, so.
So, whereas on July 5, 1967, Edward "Fast Eddie" Ben Willows opened his new barber shop, The Coast Barber Shop, in Corona Del Mar. And whereas, he got his nickname "Fast Eddie" from the football coach of Corona Del Mar High School because he gave the football team fast and fabulous haircuts so that they could get back on the field to practice. And whereas, Eddie has cut hair for local kids, Newport Beach council members, former Securities and Exchange Commission SEC Chairman Chris Cox, actor Buddy Ebsen, and former angel John Lackey. And whereas, Eddie served our nation in the United States Army. And whereas, in addition to having the fastest scissors in the West, Eddie gives back to his community regularly through groups like the American Legion and the Seraphins. And whereas, Eddie met his wife at the Balboa Pavilion, and the two of them have been working and playing in the city for the last 53 years. Now, therefore, Kevin Muldoon, as Mayor of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire city council, does hereby recognize Edward "Fast Eddie" Ben Willows for 50 years of open business and community service.
Okay. One more. Go ahead.
Oh, just right here, okay.
How about with the mayor? Come in.
Most of my customers says, "Eddie, how can you be in one place 50 years?" And I always tell them, I says, "In Corona Del Mar, it beats working." I'm here, it's like being on vacation for 50 years. I think I could do another 50. And then they ask me, "What brought you to Corona Del Mar?" I just worked for about eight years, just on Ford Road and MacArthur, down the street, for Filco Ford Aeronautronic. I was a barber there for the company, the aerospace company, for almost eight years. And when they started laying off, I said, "I better find me a place close," because all my customers had bought homes around the area. So I came to Corona Del Mar, which is only 10 minutes away from where I was working before. And I kept most of my customers, plus they brought their kids in, which build up my clientele. And then, of course, with the high school, coaches helped a lot, and all the kids. So, four generations already in Corona Del Mar. So I think I could do another 50, maybe. Thank you.
Thank you, Eddie.
Politicians love their hair, so they're all happy to do this. The next proclamation I'm going to present to Tyler Gunter, are you here? Tyler Gunter, please come forward to the podium. Now, hey, welcome.
Thank you.
I first saw you on social media before I was made aware of, or actually, I was given a heads up as far as what you were doing, but I saw on social media, you look like a big success. I want to read a proclamation, and then you're invited to say a couple of words, and then we'll take a picture at the flags.
All right.
All right. Whereas Tyler Gunter, a 17-year-old resident of Newport Beach, has been pursuing his passion of surfing since the age of three, as well as giving back to his community and society at large. And whereas, while traveling the globe, achieving success in the sport he loves, pursuing his dreams, Tyler became an ambassador for the Young and Brave Foundation, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization dedicated to those who are young, brave, and battling cancer. Built on the foundation of love, the Young and Brave Foundation exists to inspire, encourage, and inform, as well as directly invest in treatment and recovery. And whereas Tyler truly loves paying it forward, and his service as an ambassador for the Young and Brave Foundation allows him to do that by supporting young people and fulfilling their dreams as well. And whereas the city of Newport Beach applauds and commends Tyler for his exemplary accomplishments and contributions to the community. Now, therefore, I, Kevin Muldoon, Mayor of the city of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, to hereby recognize Tyler Gunter. Congratulations. You want to say a couple of words about yourself, about the foundation?
All right, so about five years ago, I met Matt Coulter, who was the starter of the Young and Brave Foundation. And I just really wanted to do something to help, because I know there's a lot of people that are struggling in life, especially families when their kids have cancer. And once I became part of the foundation, I wanted to do more than just an Instagram post or a Facebook post, so I came up with the idea to have a surf contest each year down at 54th Street, not really knowing how that would work out, not knowing who would show up. But the first year, the whole community showed up, and it was really good to see. And now, we just had our fourth contest, and it's going strong, so definitely stoked for next year. And thank you guys all for allowing me to have the permit and do that contest each year.
You're welcome. Thank you. Take the- Public comments on agenda and non-agenda items, please come forward.
Mayor Muldoon and members of the city council, my name is Jim Mosher. I see that this afternoon you have before you, on the closed session agenda, two items that are closely related to evening agenda item three, which is the unveiling of a city decision on a disability retirement claim. From that evening report, it now seems that at the previous meeting, under a same heading of a conference with the legal counsel, you held a written appeal hearing, to which, as best I can tell, no one was invited, including the person who was the subject of the appeal. The premise seems to be that an employee who is unhappy with a city disability decision can appeal to a judge, but the city itself somehow retains the right to hold a new hearing of its own and overturn the judge's ruling. Everything about this seems strange to me. It's strange that the law would allow a person to make an appeal if the body you're appealing from has the right to overturn the appeal decision. It seems strange to me that the law would allow the city to sit in judgment on a matter that it is a party to. It seems strange to me that you would be allowed to hold the hearing in such a way that the city's side of the issue is totally represented, and the other side is apparently not even allowed to know what is going on. It is strange, but I think it's welcome that the result of all that deliberation is present in a staff report at tonight's meeting. But it appears that now you're going to be adjourning to closed session again to discuss whether you agree or not with the way the write-up is written, which to me only means that nobody, including the person who's the subject of this, is ever going to know what the basis of your decision was, other than what it says here. All of that seems extremely odd to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, seeing none. City Attorney Harp?
Thank you, Mayor Muldoon. The city council will adjourn to closed session to discuss item 4A, which includes two matters of existing litigation, both of them are Paul Mathias versus the city of Newport Beach. Thank you.
Thank you. We're recessed until the 7 o'clock regular meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
The record will reflect that Mayor Pro Tem Duffield has an excused absence.
Thank you. Mr. Harp has a closed session report.
Thank you, Mayor Muldoon. There is no closed session report this evening.
Thank you. At this time, we'll have Councilman Pieter lead us in the pledge. Please rise.
Please join me in the pledge. I just wanted to say, John Quincy Adams, our sixth president, this is the 250th anniversary of his birthday today. Longtime opponent of slavery, and Adams used his role in Congress to fight it, and became a prominent leader in the fight against slavery. So, please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please bow your heads as I conduct the invocation. In honor of the celebration of our nation's Declaration of Independence 241 years ago, I'd like to recite a personal prayer from General George Washington's prayer book, with handwritten prayers for each day of the week. I thought it'd be appropriate to read his prayer for Tuesday evenings. Most gracious God and Heavenly Father, we cannot cease, but must cry unto Thee for mercy, because my sins cry against me for justice, that I may know my sins are forgiven by His death and passion. Embrace me in the arms of Thy mercy, vouchsafe to receive me unto the bosom of Thy love; shadow me with Thy wings, that I may safely rest under Thy protection this night. And so unto Thy hands I commend myself, both body and soul, in the name of Thy Son, Jesus Christ, beseeching Thee, when the life shall end, I may take my everlasting rest with Thee in Thy heavenly kingdom. Bless all in authority over us. Be merciful to all of those afflicted with Thy cross or calamity. Bless all my friends, forgive my enemies, and accept my thanksgiving this evening for all the mercies and favors afforded me. Here and graciously answer these my requests. And whatever else Thou seest needful grant us, for the sake of Jesus Christ, is whose blessed name and words I continue to pray, Our Father. Amen.
The city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the city council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The city council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The city council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode.
Thank you. This is time for city council announcements and new items council members would like to be placed for future agendas. Councilman O'Neil.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So in the last couple of weeks, a lot has happened, certainly the 4th of July was a great one for the city. I was honored to speak to a group called the Elite OC, which is a group of young professionals right over in the library a couple of weeks ago. Attended Vlad Anderson's retirement, who is a longtime public servant to both this community and this country. He served in the Marines, and I'll just say, our mayor gave a fantastic speech at the retirement ceremony. July 4, my family and I were able to attend the, and walk in, the Mariners Parade, and just like the Balboa Island Parade. If you were on the sidelines, my children were throwing candy at you, so I hope you got some. July 6, we honored the memory of Ben Carlson, both in the morning at the Junior Guards, which I was lucky to attend, fortunate to attend. And I know fellow council members were able to attend the evening as well. And then, one quick note for everyone in the audience who wasn't here an hour ago, we honored Fast Eddie, who has been operating, has been cutting hair in CDM for 50 years, 50 years as of last week. So, just great kudos to him. And then, one item for future agenda, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to amend the Finance Committee governing documents, which is Resolution 2015-5, to remove the meeting time discussion. And then I'd also like to revise the terms of the citizen members to go to a fiscal year as opposed to a calendar year, because that is, that seems to have, it seems odd to put their end of term in the middle of a budget cycle. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Pieter. Councilwoman Dixon.
Yes, Mayor, thank you very much. Just to follow along on the great celebration on the 4th of July, I think I have some visual images that will pop up there. Thanks to our community on Balboa Peninsula, the July 4 is for families. And Councilmember Mr. Pieter joined our community parade of several thousand families and children. It's always fun. And many thanks to the police and the fire department. We have the old-fashioned police car and the fire trucks, and the kids love it. And then it's followed by a fun time in the Channel Island Park. And this is community planned, resident planned, with great support from the staff. And this is, I think, about the seventh or eighth year this has been going on that's really had a tremendous impact on creating a safe and sane 4th of July on the Balboa Peninsula. So many thanks to all those residents and families, and Mr. Pieter, and the staff for really creating a fun day, and it's always a highlight of my year. Another current highlight, I just want to continually update the community on, one of the best things happening on Balboa Peninsula this summer is the trolley. I know you've heard us talk about it. I don't know how many of you here have ridden it. I know several council members have. Let me just share briefly some numbers from the 4th of July. On July 4, that single day, 2,209 people used the trolley. And the staff has calculated that eliminated about 750 cars keeping off the peninsula as they parked in the Hoag parking lot for free. Last week, well, let me say, July 4, 10:30 was the last pickup, which is a little bit beyond the time, just to make sure everybody got off the peninsula safe and sound. This is past weekend, the third full weekend, we had 1,200 on Saturday and 905 on Sunday, 33 riders both days before 8:00 a.m. for the Catalina Flyer. So that's a wonderful complimentary aspect to support the Flyer and a business departing out of Balboa Village. So what we're seeing is about 937 average riders per day. Our target was, is 427 riders per day, so I'm really delighted to see the response. It really is fun. I've ridden it every weekend, and to me, residents and visitors, just thrilled that they do not have to drive around for two hours looking for a place to park on the peninsula. And they all have wonderful stories. I've not met an unhappy person visiting or living in Newport Beach who's on the trolley, so it really is a fun time. So, this is still a trial period. I do want to thank the city staff, who's been working, certainly over the weekends, to make sure the signage is up and out there, to tell the community about the free parking at the Hoag parking lot, just on Coast Highway, just as you exit off the 55 or Newport Boulevard. And so I want to give a special shout-out to Assistant City Engineer Mike Sinekori, and the staff in Public Works, who've really been working hard to make sure the signage, the stops, the organization, the logistics are working flawlessly. And so the community appreciates it, the residents appreciate it, and our visitors are very happy. Thousands of visitors have enjoyed this experience. So thank you, Mayor. That's it.
Thank you. Councilman Herdman.
Thank you, Mayor. On July 4, I went over to Marina Park and had the pleasure of listening to our Chief of Police give a briefing to the officers that were working that day. John's message was to be firm, but also to be respectful. And I was just super impressed with his delivery of direction that day to his troops. This past Sunday, my wife and I enjoyed the concert on the green here at City Hall, and we're looking forward to the Pacific Symphony this coming Sunday. And then, just one other little announcement about the bridge. I understand there's a visual to go along with it? Maybe? There it is. All right. We're coming to completion of the Park Avenue Bridge. The city calls it the Park Avenue Bridge. I call it the Little Island Bridge. It's the bridge that connects the Big Island to the Little Island and goes over the Grand Canal, and it's been under construction for quite a while now. And on July 25, we're going to officially open the bridge. There'll be a gathering at 4 o'clock for all who are invited and who want to attend, and then the opening ceremony will be at 4:15. Pictured there is, that's actually a golf cart with a construction frame around it that was entered by Larry and Pam Calistat in the annual Balboa Island Parade this year. It was a takeoff on the bridge construction. And knowing Pam and Larry, they'll probably leave that on there for the, that frame on there for the entire year. So, kudos to Mark Vikolievich, Senior Engineer, who has been in charge of this project. It's not been easy, but it's done. And we're going to celebrate it on July 25. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Avery.
No comments.
Thank you. And I have a couple. First, I'd like to read a thank you note from Our Lady Queen of Angels. To the city manager Dave Kiff and the members of Newport Beach City Council, I'd like to express appreciation from all of our volunteers and clients of the Helping Hands Program of Our Lady Queen of Angels for the very generous grant the city has allowed us. We have received the check, and I want to ensure you all these funds will be 100% utilized for the homeless and low-income individuals and families we serve from Newport Beach. We are now seeing 300, 350 pilgrims per month, and approximately 10 to 20% of those are from Newport. We are also privileged to be working with Officer Tony Yim as the homeless liaison officer in trying to find more permanent solutions in some of these cases. We promise to be faithful stewards in using these funds to alleviate some of the suffering those poorest of God's children are experiencing. It will continue to work with the city in any way we can in being part of the solution. With grateful gratitude, Patrick Louder, Director of Helping Hands Ministry at Our Lady. Overhead, you'll see a photo of an event we had earlier today, the Big Canyon Restoration and Water Quality Improvement Project ribbon cutting. It looks just like dirt, that's because, that's what it is. But it's good dirt. They're planting native plants, they're doing water remediation and water quality infrastructure. And I barely understand this myself, and I actually can't even figure out these scissors. If you see this picture, I'm basically leaning in with all my might, and the scissors not cutting the ribbon. But staff did an excellent job. This is going to sort of be a natural preserve. This is off-jambary. And it's going to be a place that I'm sure children will enjoy exploring, and bicyclers will bike through, and that we hope to keep as open and natural for as long as the city On the July 4, I had a couple opportunities to participate in local parades. I was most privileged to be the Grand Marshal of the American Legion Old Glory Boat Parade, and it was an honor to spend time with veterans who pass and present, preserve our freedoms. And it's a great way to celebrate July 4, so I'm very grateful to the American Legion for that invitation. And at that point, I think we are complete. Madam Clerk.
Public comments on consent calendar. This is a time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items one through nine. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion, unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Thank you. Councilman O'Neil.
None.
Councilman Pieter.
None.
Councilwoman Dixon.
None.
Councilman Herdman.
None.
Councilman Avery.
None.
And I'd like to log an abstention on item three. And Mayor Pro Tem Duffield's absence, Councilwoman Dixon, do we have a motion?
We do, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve items one through nine, noting your abstention on item number three. And further, on item number three, I want to make an amendment to item 3B, to read as follows. The city council, in accordance with applicable law, adopts Resolution Number 2017-27, a resolution of the city council of the city of Newport Beach, adopting the decision in the industrial disability retirement of Paul Mathias, thereby denying the industrial disability retirement of Paul Mathias, period, striking out the last phrase and the language as I just read it. Did you get that, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
All right, and I believe there are no other changes to the consent? Do we have a second?
Thank you.
I have a second.
All right, let's go to public comments on the consent calendar. All right, seeing none, let's vote on the motion.
The motion carries unanimously, 6-0.
Madam Clerk.
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Thank you. Are there any comments on, public comments on non-agenda items?
Counsel, how are you?
Lynn Selitch, Newport Beach and City Arts Commission Chair. Couple of items, wanted to thank you very much for unanimously appointing me back to the Arts Commission, the last council meeting. I appreciate that. And I'm also on the Newport Beach First Battalion, First Marine Foundation. I wanted to remind everybody that we have a car wash this Saturday, so I expect you all to have very dirty cars and lots of cash, and come and support our First Battalion, First Marine Foundation, which does obviously great, great things for our country. And the city of Newport Beach officially adopted the 1-1 many years ago, and so it's an honor for me to also serve in that capacity. At the Dunes, yes, thank you. Steve, he's my wingman. So yes, it's at the Dunes, 10 to 2, and it's a donation only. We'll have about 35 Marines out there, and if nothing else for the women in the audience, it's really nice eye candy, if nothing else. Just saying. But I'm really proud of our troops, and so I think it's a great thing that the city of Newport Beach has adopted them. Secondly, Pacific Symphony concert that has already been mentioned, when I was initially, originally appointed to the Arts Commission, it was my goal to bring the Pacific Symphony and that level of artistic, if you will, excellence to the city of Newport Beach. And so this will be our second concert as part of the city Arts Commission initiatives, and that will be on Sunday. We'll have a, the symphony always does, the symphony in the cities has their musical playground, which is geared towards children and families. And so I'd like to remind everybody that it's a child, family-friendly environment, so hopefully we can kind of keep the tone in that arena, because we're expecting, last year we were at capacity, and this year we're expecting even more, because it's been huge- year we were at capacity, and this year we're expecting even more, because it's been hugely successful, not only for the City of Newport Beach, but for the Pacific Symphony. And so the buzz is that it's going to be even more so this year. Carl St. Clair, the maestro of the Pacific Symphony, is pulling out all the stops for it to be yet again just a world-class performance here, and it's free. And, you know, as we know, you know, tickets to the Renee and Henry Sagerstrom Concert Hall are upwards of $100. And so for our citizens and visitors, and, you know, everybody who lives, works, and plays in Newport, to be able to have that experience here on our Civic Center Green is a very special treat indeed. And finally, I think one of the things, as, you know, we've appointed our new commissioners and everything, but I did want to point out something that this council may not have the institutional knowledge to realize, that incumbent commissioners usually...
Ms. Selig?
Yes?
Are you down with the public announcements?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I just wanted to say I was really disappointed that Commissioner Kerr was not reappointed.
Thank you. Any other speakers on non-agenda items?
Yes? So, here I am again. And I'm back because of St. James, the great church, and I hope you might have read in the paper that the deal fell through. However, everybody's still worried that that property's on the chopping block. And I know that 2 years ago, the entire City Council was unanimous in wanting to support it, that area, as the church. But it's 2 years later, and Banning Ranch has kind of fallen through, and the city's lost a lot of what I think they were planning on counting chickens before they hatched. Income coming in from Banning Ranch, that's stalled for quite some time. And so I feel like I'm worried that the City of Newport Beach is going after properties that are not high enough tax-producing. And so I think of the churches that are just being leveled on the peninsula. I think of, I know at one time the developers are after the American Legion. If you do that, I'll just have a heart attack. And so, I love the place I belong there. Anyway, I know that the developers were after the Fun Zone and the Nautical Museum. And, you know, we're Newport Beach. We're a port and we're a beach. And yes, there's all this other development going on, but do we really want to be Miami Beach West, or, you know, new development? Is this what we want to be? And I say, no, I think we should be preserving, I think these things that you think are underproducing tax-wise, I believe that they're part of the very fabric of our community. Are you going to tear down the Peninsula School? Because that would make a great 4-story attractive stack of shacks. I mean, I think what went in next to the Crab Croaker is appalling. There were so many wonderful things that could have been done there. I think that the city is not preserving its heritage, and I'm just shocked that you're not protecting it. I mean, the Nautical Museum was on the way to being a first-class museum. It was partnering up with the Annapolis Maritime Museum. We had the Lynx coming in. They wanted it to be their home port. I mean, I'm not sure that everybody up on the council cares about all this stuff, but, you know, it's important. It's a big part of Newport Beach. So, I wish that you would stop going after vulnerable properties. I found out the little trailer park, before you go over the bridge, that you counted on that for being parking for the city, and they don't want to sell that. You know, you shouldn't just be counting on these vulnerable properties. They're part of the city. So, please, consider this church, and do not let it go to the developers, especially a crooked developer like Scott Bernhand that would get involved with a crooked bishop. What kind of a person would do that? And yes, he's a big campaign contributor to all of you, but that is not a good reason to let that church go down the drain. Thank you.
Thank you. He's not a campaign contributor to me, and I support the church. And I think actually most people he's not contributed to on this dais.
He's not a contributor to me either.
Or to me.
Yes, next speaker.
I'm here to speak about the Toshiva Classic, and I'm not sure if it's here or under number 19. 19?
In a few items.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other speakers on non-agenda items? Anyone's welcome to take a swing. It's a fun night. All reports from City Council on committee activities. Councilman O'Neill?
None.
Councilman Pieter?
None.
Councilwoman Dixon?
None.
Councilman Herdman?
None.
Councilman Avery?
None.
And I have none. Public hearings. Staff?
I guess Mayor Muldoon and members of the City Council, Patrick Alfred of the Planning Division. As the council is aware, the approval of the city's local coastal program, our LCP, required numerous modifications recommended by the Coastal Commission. Because our time before the Coastal Commission was limited, we knew that we would have to return Sunday with a cleanup amendment in order to address some issues that we had with those modifications. And that's why we're here tonight, to adopt a set of amendments that we will submit to the Coastal Commission for certification. So, the amendments are primarily to the LCP Implementation Plan, Title 21 of the Admissible Code, with the exception of one amendment to a policy in the Certified Coastal Land Use Plan. The Implementation Plan was approved by the City Council last year and adopted by the city in November of 2016, and the Coastal Commission certified it on January 13th, and it became effective on January 30th. So, the cleanup amendments fall into 5 categories. There are changes that were approved by the city before the, probably after the LCP was submitted to the Coastal Commission. We also have a number of corrections and clarifications that need to be made. One of the key issues that we're involved with was the shoreline height limit exceptions. And I'll go into that in more detail in a moment, but that's something that we would like to have reinstated. It was originally proposed as part of our certification, but it was modified significantly by the Coastal Commission. We also want to include what we think was basically a provision to recognize that the city does approve modification and variances to our zoning code requirements, but we don't have a provision in the LCP to recognize that, so we want to clarify that and make sure that's clear. And we also have a new minor development public hearing waiver, which the community developer can basically waive the public hearing requirement for minor coastal development permits. So, the post-LCP submittal changes. One was the legal village plan committee that was, became effective after we had submitted to the Coastal Commission, so we need to incorporate the land use and property development regulations of that PC into the LCP. The City Council also adopted an exception for landscape maintenance standards that's in the zoning code during periods of water shortages, basically exempting them from the maintenance requirements during those times, and so that needs to be included. And the City Council also increased the amount of addition, percentage of additions to non-conforming structures. They raised it from 50% to 75%. And again, that occurred post-LCP submittal, and needs to be incorporated. As far as corrections and clarifications, we have shoreline protected devices included in a number of sections, and one of the things that we fought very strongly for was policies that would protect our shoreline protected devices, allow repair, maintenance, and augmentation as necessary. It was a battle-hardened fight with the Coastal Commission, and we like to see that language carried over to other sections in order to remain internally consistent. Also, there is some errors and ambiguities involving appeals and calls for review of coastal developments, and we have amendments that will fix those. There's also some, again, errors and ambiguities regarding the call-ups of CDP waivers by the City Council, and those will be corrected. There is an exemption for coastal development permits involving repair and maintenance activities. And the way it was submitted to us by the Coastal Commission, it was shown as a subset of another section, and it really changes the context. We looked it up in the Code of Regulations, and we found that basically it was an error, and this will just basically shift the numbering of this and put it in the proper context. And something that was caught just recently is that there's a conflict in the number of days required for the notice of final action on coastal development permits, and we want to correct that to meet with the proper time period of 7 days that's in the California Code of Regulations. Now, as far as the height limits, I need to provide a little bit of background on this, because the shoreline height limitation zone has always had exceptions for certain features. When it was adopted originally in 1972, it allowed for 5-foot roof peaks. It allowed for structural projections and effects, such as chimneys, flagpoles, vents, et cetera. And it allowed increases up to the maximum of 35 feet through adoption of plan committee, a specific plan, or a use permit. When we included this information from the existing zoning code, which you can see, even though it's a little more specific, basically the same exemptions were carried over into the existing zoning code, and we added this into our LCP. But the Coastal Commission modified the language of the Implementation Plan to essentially make the 35-foot height limit an absolute limit, which it never has been since 1972. We've always had exceptions for certain types of projections beyond that height limit. They are, you know, clearly specified in the zoning code, and they have limits within that projection, and we feel that they has to be incorporated into the Implementation Plan in order to be consistent with our zoning code. So, as you can see, the proposed LCP amendments basically mirror those of the zoning code. The only real difference is, is that under the Implementation Plan, the max, the increase to the maximum of 35 feet will require a coastal development permit, and there are additional coastal resource protection findings that have to be made in order to approve a CDP, in order to go up to the maximum 35-foot height limit. Now, just to illustrate what we're talking about, our height limitation zones have basically 2 sets of height limits. There's the base height limit, and there's the maximum. This shows the non-residential height limitation zone within the shoreline height limitation area. So, you can see that for a flat roof, the base height limit is 26 feet, and the base height limit for a sloped roof is 31 feet. Those are basically permitted by right. However, through the zoning code, you can increase up to the maximum of 35 feet for a flat roof, or 40 feet for a sloped roof, through a specific plan, a planned development permit, a site development review, and in the case of things that are in the coastal zone, a coastal development permit. The height limit exceptions are basically shown here. So, it basically, these show some common projections that we allow within the height limit. So, we have things like weather vanes, chimneys, screen mechanical and vents. So, within the limits specified by the zoning code in which we want to incorporate into the LCP, we will have these exceptions, so that you could approve a CDP to allow both the maximum height limit and the allowed projections. Another section dealing with height is the ability to, through the adoption of a plan committee, to exceed the maximum height limits of the zoning code. So, Section 2030-060(c)(3) basically allows plan committees to exceed the maximum limits, including those of the shoreline height limitation areas. There are required findings in order to do so. There has to be some merit to the project in the form of additional openness, setbacks, public views, and so forth. The buildings have to be able to provide visual interest. They have to be articulated and designed to be interesting. There can be no abrupt changes in scale, and no additional floor area can result from the increase in height. And, as you see, that has been in the zoning code since 2010. The proposed LCP amendment basically removes the language that was added by the Coastal Commission prohibiting these plan communities to exceed the shoreline height limit. Now, because this would be done in the form of either a new plan community or an amendment to an existing plan community, in order to incorporate those changes, it has to go through as an LCP amendment. And all LCP amendments have to go to the Coastal Commission for approval and certification. So, if the city down the road chose to adopt a plan community that might exceed the height limit, after making all the findings I mentioned earlier, then we would have to go back to the Coastal Commission, and they would have to approve it for consistency with our own LCP and with the Coastal Act.
Quick question, Patrick?
Yes?
Mr. Alfred, just a couple clarifications. So, our current zoning code allows the City Council to exempt these projects that would, in a planned community. Is that what you're saying?
Yes. If you make the necessary findings that I mentioned earlier, you can adopt a planned community to exceed the maximum height limit of the city's height limitation zones.
Could you go to the previous slide, please? So, explain to me why the Coastal, maybe I just don't understand. Why is the Coastal Commission requiring the city to remove the language that prohibits, prohibits planned communities to exceed? Why would they, why would they exclude that?
Well, if I could just interject here, Mayor Muldoon, Councilmember Dixon. So, when we are going through the certification process, the Coastal staff's review of our exceptions to the shoreline height limitations was based on the fact that they wanted to see our land use policy and the coastal land use plan amended in such a way that would allow those exceptions. They took a very strict view of the coastal land use policy that addressed shoreline heights. And regardless of the fact that the city's zoning code had allowed the exceptions that Patrick has described to you for many years, Coastal staff wanted to see a companion amendment to the coastal land use policy before considering any type of exceptions related to going above the maximum of the 35 feet. So, what we're proposing here this evening to you is a package of amendments. One is related to the coastal land use policy that would allow this flexibility for exceeding the shoreline height limit that reflects today's code up to a maximum of 40 feet, which Patrick was describing. And it also allows the flexibility to, through the adoption of a planned community text, to allow some additional flexibility above even the 40 feet if a project merits that, based on its own merits. And that process itself is a legislative act, meaning it has to amend both our zoning code and our local coastal program, or LCP amendment. So, it would go on to the Coastal Commission for consideration as an amendment. We could not approve that independently without amending our LCP. So, I know it's a detailed process.
Well, why would we want to allow that when our code prohibits it currently? Why would we allow an exception?
So, our code currently does allow, the zoning code, not our new LCP, but our zoning code since 2010, has included the provision that through the adoption of a planned community text or zone for a property, the heights established in, the base heights established in the zoning code could be exceeded through the planned community process. So, that was something that's been in the code since 2010. And so, what staff has brought forward to you is really language that mirrors the 2010 zoning code to be included in the Implementation Plan. We are just trying to put back into our original submittal to the Coastal Commission the things that they took out in this area. We realize that this has been quite a subject of discussion, and I know that we've received a lot of public comment on it. And really, I think the, I don't believe, and I'm sure there are people in the audience who may correct me, but I think the focus of the concern is, is that through the, is the amendment of the maximum heights, it just relates to the planned community text.
Correct.
And that's been in the code since 2010. The other changes, I believe, in terms of the exceptions to the shoreline height limit have not been, has caused as much concern. We did add something new regarding the governmental facilities. So, from a staff perspective, we are presenting to you what the current zoning code allows, and just asking that it be put forward in the Implementation Plan. If council is uncomfortable or doesn't want to proceed with one or all of the components, perhaps you don't... perhaps you don't comfortable with the planned community text amendment, that is something that we would ask you to continue the hearing so we can prepare the proper documents and come back to you in, in two weeks. Again, it's interesting, and there's, it's a process issue, but to, to add any exception to the height requires an LCP amendment. And in the future, if you wanted to change your provisions, you would have to amend the LCP as well. So either way, it's a Coastal Commission hearing. So it's up to you as to how you would want to proceed at this time.
All right, just one, thank you. One final question to clarify what you're saying. It's already in the zoning code. In order to submit the amendments to the LCP, we are, we're bringing the LCP in conformance with our zoning code.
That, that's our proposal for this evening, correct?
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Another question from Councilman O'Neil.
So for the folks in the audience and the folks who are watching from home, would you mind telling everyone what a planned community is, and maybe one or two examples?
Yes. So a planned community is a, is a zoning classification which has, that is assigned to a unique geographical area. And it has its own set of development standards that apply to that area. You find a lot of the original communities in the city of Newport Beach that were developed by the Irvine Company to have planned communities zoning texts that go with them, and it's also something that you, which is very common in Southern Orange County. It was the zoning that came in, it was, I'll say fashionable, starting back in the late sixties into, in the nineteen seventies. So ours, our zoning code does allow, not only, it recognizes existing planned community zoning regulations that are within the community, but also allows new planned communities to be established, provided that they follow the, the standards within the zoning code.
So some examples would be?
So, thank you, Mr. Kev. So some examples would be, is the, the recent Back Bay Landing Project that was adopted. It has its own planned community regulations. Another example would be the, the Lido Villas that were, were discussed earlier. Those are also a planned community text. It's smaller than the normal acreage requirement, but there's a provision within the zoning code that gives considerations to, to smaller planned communities. Newport Center is almost entirely a planned community zoning area. There's more than one in it.
Thank you. Councilman Herman.
Just a few questions. Kim, I'm new, so I need to ask this question. Who is our zoning administrator?
He's sitting to the left of me. It's Mr. Patrick.
Patrick, okay. Very good. And then I just need some clarification on individual structures on the shoreline, not planned community, but individual structures and height limitations. Does it remain thirty-five feet? Individual homes, for example, that are being built on the shoreline?
It would be under thirty-five feet.
Okay.
In most instances. So, if you want to, Patrick, did you have that graphic?
Just wanted to add, the example that we gave is the, for non-residential areas in the shoreline. We have other zones for residential inside, outside the shoreline height limitation area, and they have lower standards. But they both have the same structure where they have a base height limit that's permitted by right, and a maximum that can be achieved through a, a site development review, a specific plan, or a planned development permit. And there are, let's say, some very specified and restricted allowed projections within the height limit for things such as chimneys and cupolas and weather vanes and things of that nature.
Okay. Thank you. And then it's conceivable that all of this amendment in its entirety, or sections of it, could be rejected by the Coastal Commission?
Yes. Councilmember Hurdman, there's the possibility that they, that the Coastal staff or Coastal Commission will have suggested modifications to what we are submitting to them as part of this package.
Okay. Thank you.
Avery.
So I suppose the Banning Ranch project, if it ever came back, would qualify under this planned community?
Banning, Banning Ranch was a proposed planned community, so it did have its own text. But I think its heights were within the shoreline height limit. Patrick?
Yeah. That's a different case because the Newport Banning Ranch is a deferred certification area, so we would not have coastal development permit authority in that area unless, you know, basically those land use and resource protection issues are resolved. That's been in our LCP since 2005, that we basically are not doing any real coastal planning for that area, and that even after certification, it remains within the Coastal Commission's jurisdiction.
Thank you.
Jeff?
Just to wrap it up, we have a proposed government facility height exception. Currently, this is handled by zoning code Section 2100.040. It allows the City Council to exempt city development projects from provisions of the zoning code. However, we have no corresponding provision in the LCP. So the new section, 2130-060d, would allow for limited increases to a government facility that is necessary in order for that facility to function. And the main example that we're using in this area is, is a fire station, that they might need additional height in order to accommodate emergency vehicles and equipment. And it is, this new section provides that this is going to be done through a coastal development permit, and all necessary findings have to be made in order to approve that as well.
Excellent. Thank you. Great, great summary. Kim, you will be missed. Okay. I'm going to open up the public hearing. Are there any public comments on this item?
Mayor Muldoon, members of the City Council, my name is Jim Mosher. I want to start by making it clear that I don't think that Mr. Alfred or Ms. Brandt are bad people, but I do think this is how bad law gets enacted. Before the Plan, Planning Commission, the public had three minutes to comment on all of this, plus the Balboa Village Parking Management Plan, and many pages of text related to Peninsula Point Oceanfront Encroachment Program. That was not a very effective dialogue. This is probably not going to be either, but I'm going to confine myself to this issue about the thirty-five-foot height limit. The idea that planned communities within the shoreline height limitation area or anywhere else have no height limit restrictions on them is not clean up. It's a radical change in how residents of Newport Beach view the height limits. Since 1972, as one of the early slides said, planned communities were one of the mechanisms that was available for going from the twenty-six-foot base height to the thirty-five-foot maximum height. Since 1972, the code also said that planned communities that had been adopted prior to 1972, and the reason the height limits were imposed in 1972 was the looming prospect of these high-rise residential things completely ringing our ocean front and our harbor front. It said that those adopted prior to 1972 that might have higher light, height limits were grandfathered in. An adopted planned community, the height limits would be honored. In 2002, the zoning code was revised in response to the 2006 general plan update. The sentence that had been there for so long has been changed to say, "Height limits established as part of an adopted planned community shall not be subject to the subsection with these rules in it." That was the old language about planned communities adopted prior to 1972. And if you read the sentences before it, it still says that the adoption of a planned community is the way you go from the base height of twenty-six to the maximum height of thirty-five. I don't know if the Planning Division is willfully misreading that, or what is going on, but planned communities are not supposed to be accepted. And you need to look here at page 1041 of your packet to see what they're doing to what was a simple declaration in our coastal land use plan, which is like the general plan for the coastal area. It made a simple statement that we were going to maintain the thirty-five-foot height limitation. I think a vast majority of the public feels that is a good limitation. There were two carve-outs recently, one for Marina Park, one for the City Hall site where the Lido House Hotel is going in. Those are being eliminated, and a new policy is being put in. And if the planned community issue was not enough for you, there is now no explanation of why the Lido House Hotel can be over the height limit. This is bad law. You should not be adopting this tonight. You should do more than the continuation. It needs to be radically changed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Next speaker, please.
Mayor, members of the council, my name is Carol McDermott, and I would just like to speak in favor of this cleanup amendment. I think the staff has done a very comprehensive and careful approach to these cleanups. And because very small portions of the planned communities are even in the coastal zone, I think that it doesn't apply to large areas that would be affected if that's the issue. And I think that during the zoning code update that we went through back in 2006, architects worked very hard and very closely, and then with the Planning Commission, to clarify these provisions in the zoning code. And I think it's very appropriate that they be commemorated clearly so that there are no misunderstandings in the LCP, because you can argue with the Coastal Staff forever unless you have these agreements. And so while they may want changes once we take it to them, I think it's going to be incumbent upon us and the staff to help them accept these changes, and I urge your approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on this item? Seeing none. Staff, would you please provide some responsive information to issues raised by Mr. Mosher?
Yes, if I can, Mr. Muldoon. Mr. Mosher has raised the comment before regarding that one sentence for the planned, planned community districts to be allowed to exceed the height limit. It is our belief that, that the, the language as we are interpreting it and have been applying it is, is what was with the intent of the 2010 zoning code adoption, when this language was included as part of that portion of the zoning code. In relationship to the comment that there, that the coastal land use policy is going from something very simple to something more complex, and as the pages, the page references 10-41, we need to put all that additional language into the coastal land use policy to support the changes in the implementation plan. That is why we're here this evening, is because the policy was too simplistic from coastal's perspective in order to allow these exceptions. So we had to go back and make our coastal land use plan more, policy more complicated in order to go forward with these exceptions that have long been part of the city's zoning code. And in relationship to the Marina Park exception and Lido House Hotel exception, which are deleted from the policy, that is because they're already within the new implementation plan, and there's not necessary to have them in two places as part of the overall LCP. And actually, I had that same question for Patrick this afternoon. I had a little bit of a panic moment, and he assured me that, no, it was already in the implementation plan. So we are not losing the height restrictions for either the Lido House Hotel or the Marina Park, which were actually hard-won victories with the Coastal Commission for both of those projects. So those remain intact as part of our certified LCP.
Thank you. So I think I understand the latter. But to the former issue, Mr. Harp, would you mind chiming in? Specifically, I'm interested in the changing of the code, or understanding of the code from the dates that Mr. Mosher brought to our attention to now. And if you don't, if I'm putting you on the spot, that's fine. We can, can circle back with you.
I'm not sure if I completely understand the question, but I think that in 2010, the code was modified to allow for these things. And in essence, what you have is that you have it in the zoning code, but didn't get carried over to the LCP. So your options are to kind of do one cleanup item in the LCP to allow for it, or every single person who comes through who wants the modification would have to go get their own LCP amendment, if I'm understanding it correct.
So I think my question more went to the claim that Mr. Mosher made regarding the intent of the law. Was it 1972? Yeah.
Maybe, if you could, Mr. Mosher, could you repeat your question? What was the statement you made, just so I can answer it correctly?
From 1972, that the zoning code had a grandfathering clause that allowed planned communities that had been enacted prior to 1972 to maintain their height limits, provided a use permit was issued for things over that height. In 2010, the public was told that the amendments to the code were making no change to height limits. The public was assured there was no change. At a Corona Del Mar Residents Association meeting, I asked Ms. Brandt if anyone in 2010 was informed that we were consciously changing the limit about planned communities, that they were, could be used for going from the base height to the maximum height, and ones prior to 1972 were grandfathered. She said nobody in the Planning Division had the institutional knowledge to know why the sentence was changed. I think the sentence was just a garbled version of what had been there before. Thank you.
I understand now. Mr. Harp?
Maybe if I could have a few minutes. I wasn't at that meeting, so I don't really have as much of the background about that as Mr. Mosher and Mrs. Brandt. May I confer with them for just a moment and respond?
Sure.
All right. Thank you.
We'll take a, just say in the dais, five-minute recess.
They gotta go through the Coastal. They gotta go through our.
Yep. They have to have a permit.
Right.
Yeah.
The recess has ended.
I appreciate you giving us a few more moments there. I had actually left the city from 2009 to 2011, so this happened right when I was gone, so I didn't have the historical knowledge. I did have an opportunity to confer with Mr. Alfred, who was there at the time, and also had spoken to who was at the time the community development director or planning director, as the case may be, back in 2010, David Leppo, as well as Jim Campbell, who had worked on this provision. And I think the point that Mr. Mosher is making is that the language that you're seeing highlighted on the screen, which provides height limits established as part of an adopted planned community shall not be subject to the subsection. Mr. Mosher is basically arguing that when that language was added, it was only intended to apply to the grandfathered planned communities that were in existence. And speaking to staff about this and looking at the plain meaning of the language, it seems fairly obvious that it was meant to apply to all planned communities and not restricted to just the grandfathered ones that are in -- that were grandfathered in. So that's the interpretation that staff has come up with, and that's why they're moving forward with it for all planned communities as opposed to just the ones that were in existence in 1972.
And that's to create uniformity in a planned, essentially?
That's right.
The intent is to create uniformity in a planned community, so this section shall not be applied to that for the sake of cohesiveness and uniformity in that community?
Absolutely. And if they had intended to restrict it, they would have called them out when they added this provision.
How so?
Well, you could have listed the ones that were existing as opposed to new, or even included language like that, you know, existing planned communities as opposed to, you know, newly established.
Thank you. Councilman Hurdman.
I would -- I'm sensing that with the writing of these amendments, with the development of these amendments, you were working in cooperation with the Coastal Commission?
Yes, we submitted a notice of availability to the Coastal Commission as well as other agencies in February, and we have been in communication with them regarding -- we provided them summaries of all the amendments, but we have not received any formal communication on these at this time.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilwoman Dixon?
I think there is ambiguity. I'm just wondering if it would be with your concurrence, mayor, that we bring -- ask staff to come back with clarifying language that would state at least the determination, if the council agrees, of this council to clarify the zoning code, really, which is, if I'm correcting -- correct in my understanding, is what's driving this language for the LCP that's creating this question. So is it necessary to go back and look at clarifying the 2010 zoning code to clarify planned unit developments must adhere to the same limits -- height limits as other developments in the coastal zone?
Probably the proper way to look at it would be to look at whether or not you wanted to carve out the ones that were existing as opposed to new. That'd probably be the --
Well, that's fine with me, yeah.
-- zoning code.
Just make it clear.
So I think Councilman Piattar's remarks. Now I'll let Mr. Mosher respond, then I will close the public hearing aspect of this, and then we'll entertain motions at that time. So Councilman Piattar?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kim and Patrick, you know, if we have the -- the fear obviously is, is that if we exempt planned communities from the height limit, that all of a sudden we go in there and carve out a section of existing R1, R2 zoning in the coastal zone, and we just change it to a PC text. And then all of a sudden, it'll be exempt from heights. But that's not -- I mean, in order to do that, what is the process? I mean, you're going through, in effect, a zone change, right?
Yes. Councilmember Piattar, that is correct. It would be a request for a rezone from whatever the original zoning district is to planned community. That request is a legislative request amendment. It would require public hearings before the Planning Commission, before the city council, and then should the city council approve the request, then it would have to go on to the Coastal Commission for an LCP amendment. So it's a very long process and with multiple public hearings. And the request would be balanced against the general plan policies as well as our coastal land use plan policies as well. So all of that would be taken into consideration through that process.
So it's not like we can take and just slide something underneath the Coastal Commission's nose and allow us to exceed the height limit somewhere without an extensive public hearing process?
That is correct. And I'll just say this directly. Staff would not have any authority to approve any of these changes. This would be something that has to go through a lengthy public hearing.
Because a planned community text is a zone change, and the process is legislative, like you say, and would go through the Planning Commission and the city council, and then Coastal Commission.
And then the Coastal Commission.
So is there a clarification that can be made that this refers to existing planned community texts? I mean, let's say that you went through that process for a section, and whatever the reason you -- let's say you raised it afoot, and Coastal and everybody approved it. Does the language that we have in there, is that appropriate today? Or should we tweak it and say that existing planned community texts, I mean, or do we need it in there for future approved planned community texts? Knowing that we have to go through this process, what's the appropriate language? Should we, you know, try and come up with something like Councilmember Dixon has indicated?
I think the policy question that's before you as part of these proposed amendments, does the city council want the ability to consider potential future projects that involve a planned community text that may exceed the shoreline height limit? That's the question before you. If you want to maintain the shoreline height limit to the 35 feet as a maximum, then we would take away that provision.
You'd modify our existing -- you'd modify our existing zoning code instead of the LCP.
Well, we wouldn't have to modify our existing zoning code, because the LCP would be the prevailing height ordinance document that would be applied in the coastal zone. So there wouldn't be a need to change the zoning code. You would just -- you could give us the direction this evening that you would prefer to maintain the shoreline height limit at the maximum height of 35 feet in the planned community text, and so we can modify that provision from the code, so it wouldn't apply.
And then in a future date, if for there was some reason that we wanted to do it, you'd still go through the same process?
You would have to, right. We would go through this exact same process and amend the LCP and request an amendment to the LCP from the Coastal Commission.
I mean, I'm okay with just taking it out of the revisions then. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim, this is your moment.
Yes. Yeah, I certainly hope that the council would stick with the 35-foot height limit that we have had since 1972. But if we could show that slide again that showed the highlighted sentence. I would like to call the council and the public's attention to the line that is 1, 2, 3 lines above that. And you will see, as it is said since 1972, "The adoption of a planned community district is still one of the mechanisms available, like a specific plan, planned development permit and so forth, one of the mechanisms for going from the base height to the maximum height." If that last sentence was anything other than a grandfathering clause, the entire paragraph there would make no sense. It said you can adopt a planned community to go from the base height to the maximum height, and then it says, "Height limits here don't apply to planned communities." It would make no sense if that was anything other than a grandfathering clause in the last sentence. Thank you.
Thank you. I think I respectfully disagree on that intent, but I think there is some issue here. So bringing -- I will now, this time, close the public hearing and bring it back to council for comments or motions. Yes, Councilwoman Dixon?
Well, I'd like to bring it back for further discussion with the -- I guess that would be a motion to -- but let me just ask a clarifying question by, are we putting in jeopardy any of this LCP amendment process to the Coastal Commission by pulling this out, the planned community issue out, just to bring more clarity in a revision?
No. No, you would not be. I guess I would want to understand your motion. If you wanted to take the planned community text out and defer that portion of it for further discussion, or just wait until we get through the cleanup amendment process, it's council's direction. But at this point, if we were just to -- if we were to come back in two weeks with what your recommendation is tonight, that doesn't affect our -- materially affect our schedule.
Well, and you've clarified, since I spoke previously, that we do not need to amend the 2010 zoning code. It's just to bring explicit clarity around planned unit developments, that they shall not exceed a height limit of 35 feet.
Correct.
So I could make a motion to that, but, mayor, I could be flexible either way. If we could -- I'll put that out there, but if we want to have the staff consider it further, I'm comfortable with that as well.
Councilman Hurdman?
I'd like you to make the motion, Councilwoman Dixon.
All right. I'll make a motion to bring explicit clarity to the height limit requirement for planned unit developments not to exceed 35 feet in conformity with the rest of the coastal plan.
And I'll second the motion.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, just a clarification, Mr. Mayor. So we're basically continuing and asking staff to come back with a revised report.
Not report, but legal language, yes. Mr. Harp, do you have a?
I think if you wanted to move forward with just out that one provision, you could just make the motion to move forward with everything else except for that one piece of it, if that's what you're trying to get to.
So that would -- I would propose a substitute motion to that effect, that we approve it tonight with the exception that we would not approve the height limit or the planned community text amendment.
Right.
I accept that.
Okay. So the amended motion was accepted by the motion, by the maker of the motion?
Was it a substitute motion or an amendment to Councilmember Dixon's? Because he said substitute motion.
It's amendment.
Yeah. Friendly amendment.
Friendly amendment, and then it's -- okay. Accepted by Councilmember Dixon and Councilmember Hurdman.
That's fine with me.
Thank you.
And just so we're clear, it's the highlighted sentence that was previously placed that will be omitted from the staff report approval. Is that correct for clarification?
I think that's clear to us.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Avery?
There's also provision for a non-coastline, coastwise, non-residential development where they could go potentially to 55 feet?
Shoreline area, I think it's.
Non-residential, non-shoreline.
Yes. I think you're referring to a -- one of the other height limit zones. It's the non-residential, non-shoreline height limitation area where the base height limit is 32 feet for flat roofs and 37 feet for a sloped roof. And the maximum is 50 feet for a flat roof and 55 feet for a sloped roof. So that's -- that's basically outside the shoreline height limitation area. So that's the height limit that is for non-residential development outside the shoreline height limitation area, and that's citywide.
Right. For instance, where would -- and I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Where would that be? Would there be any of that on the peninsula, for instance?
No. The shoreline height limitation area includes the peninsula. I think in the supplemental memo we sent out has the shoreline height limitation area highlighted, so you can see where it is.
Right. See the map? Oh, the supplemental. Okay. Great. Thank you.
Any other comments on this item from the dais?
All right. Let's vote.
Are we voting on the amendment?
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously 6-0.
Thank you. Item number 11, staff?
So, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I'll give Tara just a minute or two to clear the previous screen. This item is a consideration -- it's an annual consideration that we bring to you that is generally staff's proposed special event support recommendations. And Tara has a brief presentation to share with you on that, if you'd like that.
Good evening, Mayor Muldoon, and members of the council. I'm joined by Sean Levin, Deputy Director of Recreation and Senior Services. I'm going to give you a very brief overview of our recommendations, because they are in the staff report. We have a couple of proposed modifications to those recommendations I wanted to pose to you this evening. The staff report is written. It proposes to fund 18 community events for about $53,000. You'll see a little asterisk there. After the report was published, the Field of Honor folks gave me a call and noted that their event has expanded to two weeks, thus their permit fee would be higher from the city. So staff is asking the council if we could please raise their recommendation from $1,000 to $2,700. And if the council agrees to that, the community grant total will be $55,011 if that amendment is approved. We also are proposing five grants for signature events for about $229,000, bringing us to just over $282,000 in funding for signature and community grants this year. There are -- one of the recommendations is authorize the agreements with the signature event recipients. And then another modification we propose, actually in an addendum to your staff report, we had proposed a three-year grant agreement with the Christmas Boat Parade organizers, the Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce. We are instead asking the council if we could please enter into a three-year agreement with an automatic one-year renewal for that term. After further discussions with the chamber, they really feel a four-year agreement would give them more stability for the event and help them to raise sponsorships over that time period. And the last recommendation is the approved changes moving forward to the program. That was included in your staff report, a red-line version of what those changes might look like. That's actually going to tell us tonight, because staff is actually asking if we could not consider those this evening, and we could come back to you. In there was a plan, a funding cycle plan, that groups could apply for funding for up to seven years, and they would cycle through a set amount of money. And then eventually, they'd have to cycle off for a year and come back. And that was good in concept, but we looked at how we would implement that. We had more questions, so we'd like to perhaps work further with Councilmembers Dixon and Piattar on that, and either return to the council with some changes to that program, or we could make those changes at the administrative level. With that, that concludes my staff report.
Thank you. Yeah, we'll take one minute.
So Councilmember O'Neil is a member of the Exchange Club of Newport Harbor. So if we could take those items for any discussion first, and then have Councilmember O'Neil recuse himself, that'd be.
Okay. So before discussion on that topic or a motion, we'll let Councilman O'Neil know. He can stay until the topic comes up.
It actually has to be taken first under the rules.
Okay. Sorry.
Sorry about that.
All right. Any discuss -- well, does that go to the public as well?
Yeah. So it'd be best to go ahead and have a council discussion on that, get any public input, give any direction to staff on the item, and then have Councilmember O'Neil return.
Thank you. Would you -- is there any extra input to put on that item? No. Any discussion from council on the Exchange Club item? Seeing none. Any comments from the public on Exchange Club item? Seeing none. Should we quickly approve that to continue, or do we just end discussion on it? Okay. Thank you. Okay. That's resolved. Staff, anything further for a report? Thank you. And just to be clear, did you -- I may admit, did you cover the essence of this program and how it works practically speaking?
I can certainly do that. Several years ago, the city restructured our grant program to divide the grants into two categories, community and charitable. And these are hyper-local focused events. These are our school events, community-based HOA associations, Fourth of July parades. And those grants are small. They're actually fee credits. They help to cover some of the costs of having their event here in Newport Beach. We then have a separate category that's funded out of our economic development budget, and these are our large signature events. These are grants -- these are for events that bring a lot of people to Newport Beach that stay in our hotels, shop. We then have a separate category that's funded out of our economic development budget, and these are our large signature events. These are grants, these are for, these are grants for events that bring a lot of people to Newport Beach that stay in our hotels, shop in the stores, dine in the restaurants.
Excellent, thank you. I think that's good for the audience to understand. At this time, before I open up to the public, I'm going to ask one of the recipients of grants, representative step forward, Mr. Rozansky, if you would like to this time present us a little bit of information.
Sure, thank you, Mayor Muldoon and council. I think I have a presentation that if you'd load it up for me, I'd appreciate that. And if I may add, I have a, it's probably about a five or six-minute presentation, so if I could have more than just a three-minute limit, I would appreciate that.
We'll see. No, you can't.
I'll talk fast. There we go. Okay, good evening, council and Mayor. Steve Rozansky, President and CEO of the Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce, and we are the home of the Newport Beach Christmas Boat Parade. As you can see from the slide up on your screen, this year will be the 109th Christmas Boat Parade in Newport Beach. And like the chamber, we're 110 years old. We're both part of the fabric of this community and Newport Beach institutions. Before we get into the meat of my presentation, I did want to have a little presentation of a video here so that you can see a little bit of a recap of what we did in 2016. So if you'll bear with me. And I just want to say on behalf of the Lee family and with the Commodores Club and the Chamber of Commerce, thank you everyone for being here tonight. Have a wonderful, wonderful parade. I'm out of the city council and all assistance in Newport Beach. I want to thank you, O'Gerton and Newport Beach and Company for the hard work that goes into the research and truly grander finding events each year. I want to welcome everyone to officially enjoy the 108th Newport Beach Christmas Boat Parade. Thank you.
This is such an honor to be here, and I want to bring attention obviously to the trees. So the tree is covered in thousands of gold ribbons, and each of the ribbon has the name of a child and their state and their age. Three, two, one, go!
So just a little bit of a history here. We entered into the original sponsorship agreement with the city back in 2014. It was a four-year agreement, and this 2017 will be the last year of that agreement.
Proceed.
Okay, thank you. This is the last year of the agreement, and that's why we're back here asking for an extension. So, you know, what do you get for your $50,000, you might ask? And so if you look on your screen here, you can see this data was collected in 2015 actually by Newport Beach and Company. They commissioned a study of the parade to see what kind of an economic impact it had on the city. So if, you can see on the left-hand side there of your screen, $4 million in visitor spending directly attributed to the parade, another $2.5 million in resident spending attributed to the parade, which is an overall $6.5 million economic impact for the city. They generated roughly over 3,800 visitor room nights in hotels, and that resulted in sales taxes, bed taxes, boarding fees on yachts in the harbor that, you know, people rent from Hornblower and others, of over $105,000 in tax revenue to the city. These are some of our past and present partners, sponsors of the boat parade. Obviously, the city of Newport Beach has been our biggest, but Maguire's and Simple Green, long-term sponsors, as well as some of the other sponsors, which are fairly new except for maybe McKenna Yachts, or they've been helping us for years with the parade. And we've been able, through the use of the $50,000 that you give us, to leverage that into other types of investment in the parade by these sponsors who see the value of sponsoring with us. One of the things that we've added is an improvement to the parade is grand marshals. We've done that for the last three years. The first two up in the corner there, that's Mark McGrath with Sugar Ray and Leslie Mann. She's an A-list actress who both happened to have grew up here in Huntington Beach, or, sorry, Newport Beach. One, I think, went to Corona del Mar, one went to Harbor. On your left there is Arnie Moreno, who is the owner of the Angels, also happens to be a Newport Beach resident. And on the bottom, one who is a Newport Beach resident and two who aren't, obviously, we know who those are. We had a partnership with Disney, and Mickey Mouse was our grand marshal this year. In addition, these are the grand marshals on the first night. The other four nights of the parade also featured grand marshals like Hometown Heroes, which were our police and fire and lifeguards. We had Olympic athletes, we had The Voice, we had the USC Trojan Marching Band and others to liven up the parade and give it a little bit more pizzazz for the people who are on the shore watching. We've also been able to enhance our media involvement with the parade. You know, all the LA networks, TV networks were there on Media Night, which was Wednesday night, to film the parade and interview people either in the parade. I think the mayor might have even been in an interview or two. Dave Beek, who's sitting in the audience, I know is in a lot of interviews. But it, you know, highlights the parade and advertises not just to our residents locally here, but obviously to the whole LA and Southern California area. Next slide here. Here are some of the attendee resources that we're able to produce. If you'd pass along that program that I handed you, maybe the council can take a look at it while I'm talking. So we've been able to enhance our website, so better experience for people who want to get information about the parade, come down and visit, see where they can go watch the parade. Things like the trolley might be important, maybe parade week where we can have the trolley going, which is, you know, another big traffic generating event on the peninsula. But other things like our program, if you look at the program that's being passed along, you can see the difference in the current program, which is the slicker, heavier version, and the not-so-stable version that we were putting out. So we've been able to enhance that aspect as well as the parade map, which we hand out free to attendees, and it's also on our website. As far as social media goes, we've also been able to beef up our Twitter, Instagram, and Facebook. Social media is, you know, you're dead if you're not in the social media sphere on anything you do these days. And we've invested a lot of time, effort, and money in improving our presence there. We have 15,000 social media followers. If you saw on the video, there's, you know, we get millions of, over the course of a year, of hits on the Boat Parade website seeking information about the Boat Parade in Newport Beach. Community benefits, this is a quote from Kevin Lorton with Hornblower Cruises. Boat Parade is a centerpiece of the holiday season, a significant driver for our business. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but I guarantee you, if you talk to virtually any business that's located on the harbor, whether it's the yacht clubs, the restaurants, the Hornblower lots that sail around the harbor, they're all packed. Some of them are at their busiest weeks of the year and thus generating, or helping to generate, that $6.5 million in benefits. Again, here's just a little calculation of $6.5 million in economic activity, less the $50,000 investment is about a $129 to one return on your investment. And then lastly, just wanted to list a few of the community supporters here. I know the council has talked, not in so much in our context, but in the context of other people seeking support from the city, you know, to get the private sector involved. Well, this is the private sector, it doesn't get any more private than that. You know, people who register their homes and boats in the parade, the Commodores Club, which we have probably 20 here in the audience and another 15 that are not here tonight, active Commodores, businesses like Firebrand Media, people who donate their boats, Seato, governmental agencies that are getting involved, like the Harbor Patrol, the sheriff, the Coast Guard, Coast Guard Auxiliary, all these people do this for free. They don't, we don't pay them. They're investing in our parade and experience for our businesses, our residents, and our visitors. So with that, I'll say, I'll conclude my presentation. I hope you will agree to the staff's recommended three-year contract with the possible one-year option. I know I'd ask for five years, but we're perfectly willing to accept that. We think that's a fair and reasonable compromise and hopefully will allow us to continue expanding and growing the parade, the presence with ultimately maybe a half hour or an hour on TV like the Rose Parade someday. So that's our goal. And I'll just add one other thing. If you like, we can bring our scissors to your ribbon cutting. So we have ones that cut because ours are big and they cut. Any questions about presentation or the agreement?
I don't see any, Mr. Rozansky.
Great, thank you.
Thank you so much. Before I go out to the public, because I know we have some members, Commodore and volunteers also who are eager to speak, I'm not sure they have to though, to be quite honest, because I think there's a lot of support on the dais for the Christmas Boat Parade. So before we head up to the public, respectfully request, if you're comfortable with a show of hand, if you're, support the renewal of the agreement for the Boat Parade. I didn't think there would be an issue, but I appreciate your volunteers, activists, and leaders coming out in stride and to advocate for this wonderful event that I think is a great tradition, and it looks like everyone here agrees. So if there are any comments on this item about maybe some of the other items, or if you have a different opinion, please come forward.
Mayor Muldoon and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher, and I, on this item, just wanted to say I wholeheartedly support the staff's recommendation change to the policy, which apparently you're not going to be acting on tonight, which is to try to wean some of these organizations of their dependence on city grants by having a periodic timeout in the cities granting to those organizations. It's remarkable how organizations become dependent on city funding when it's granted, and equally remarkable how they manage to make do when the city does not support their events. The OC Marathon being a prime example of that, for many years depended on $50,000 a year from the city, and since then seem to be getting along just as well or better without it. I hope that policy, if it is enacted, will apply as the draft appears to indicate, not just to the community's events, but to the signature events also, and the Boat Parade that we've heard so much of. If it has the huge impact and benefit to the businesses, it would be good every five or six years for those businesses to be carrying the cost of it that they benefit from. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? All right, seeing no other comments on the side.
Mr. Mayor, sir, did you want to speak on the Toshiba that? This is the time to do that. Okay, this is the time to come up.
Thank you, Mr. Kev.
Yeah, my dress came straight from the golf course. My name is Brian Horn, 35-year resident of Newport, member of the Hoag Charity Sports Board of Directors. This year marks the 20th year of success with Hoag as the host operator and beneficiary of the tournament. $19.5 million for charity, including almost $300,000 to the Newport Beach Explorer Scouts, $15,000 to the 1-1 Foundation, $50,000 to Newport Beach and Corona del Mar High School golf teams. Annually, over $28 million in economic impact from hundreds of hotel rooms, restaurants, and shopping in the community during this week. Additionally, from tournament business spending during the year in the community with numerous vendors, adds up to a beautiful $532 million of local economic impact right here in Newport and Newport alone. Over $16 million worth of earned media from PR efforts and the Golf Channel broadcasted almost 90 million households here in the United States and almost 300 million households internationally. Many people would think that a grant from the city would be inconsequential for our cause, and nothing could be further from the truth. We have two big challenges coming up. First is to re-educate and regrow the tournament. We're taking 18 months off from last fall to go to March of 2018. We need help with our challenge of unfamiliarity, and we need to be more prominent in Newport and outside of Newport and greater OC and Los Angeles to attract new fans. Funds from the city would be used specifically for that purpose and no other purpose at all. We can get people here and get them to spend their dollars while they're here. Second is we may lose our title sponsor Toshiba after 20 years. We're in search of replacements with a potential goal of having Hoag as the title. This would be beneficial to charity and the city of Newport Beach. Imagine having a flagship brand in Newport Beach promoted as destination medical care throughout the county and the world. We respectfully ask you reconsider staff's recommendation, no offense, staff, and provide needed funding commensurate to Toshiba's impact on the city and help us re-energize the tournament this coming March and to help us promote the tournament more substantially inside and further outside to attract fans and consumers to Newport. We need you guys as partners with what we do for the city. $28 million every year, year over year, for 19 years is a substantial economic impact. So we give a lot. We need, we need you guys to help us get this thing reinvigorated and be partners with us in this tournament going forward. Thank you for your time and attention. I appreciate it. Any questions?
I have some, I'm sure others do as well. I'll defer to my colleagues first. Councilman O'Neil, do you have a question?
Not on this issue.
Councilman Pieter.
Thanks, Brian. In your application, there was no dollar amount because that's the way the application's set up, but if you had your wish, what would, what would you be looking for?
$50,000.
And tell me, when you have, when you do your event, what kind of city fees do you usually deal with? Do you know?
Jeff? Come on down here.
Tara, do you know?
Their city fees run between $11,000 and $12,000 per event. We have the last three fiscal years.
And that's mainly to be able to put up parking signs and things like that?
It's their special event permit, some assistance from the police department, and some assistance from the police explorers, and one, a permit from the fire department for the tent they put up.
Okay, so from the fee side, we're looking $11,000, $12,000. But then you guys end up hiring a lot of off-duty policemen to actually provide services to direct traffic on private property and sites that aren't part of that, right?
That is correct.
We have policemen, we have Explorer Scouts, and private security.
Probably need to move that microphone over to your mouth a little bit.
We have policemen and we have Explorer Scouts as well that we, we've been utilizing for about 15 years.
And so you, like you say, you donate to the Explorer Scouts and you, and you pay the off-duty officers?
Correct.
And do you have an amount that you, that you pay for that aspect of it, do you know?
In the neighborhood of $20,000.
Okay. That's my question. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Dixon?
Thank you, Mayor. Have we contributed, has the city contributed to the Toshiba?
Not in recent history, not since we've been doing the grant program as, in its current form, no. I'd say not for at least 10 years.
And then I just have a follow-up question to Councilmember Pieter's question about the use of our police. Are they paid overtime when they are working the tournament? And who pays for that?
Typically, the way it works is a schedule of fees when city services are required for an event, and they're actually under what the city is required to pay for that staff person. But I'm not aware of off-duty officers or anything like that being hired. That's news to me. But we charge, we require as part of a permit, certain, a certain level of service to make the event safe, and that's, that's what we're charging for in the permit.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Dixon, that's also consistent with Chief Lewis just told me, there aren't, there aren't police officers from the Newport Beach Police Department serving the Toshiba event outside of their uniform, outside of their assignments, that are covered within the existing fee structure.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the dais? So you said you're going to lose your signature sponsor, Toshiba? Or is that certain, or?
First of all, my name's Jeff Perser. I'm the Executive Director of Hoag Charity Sports and the Toshiba Classic. Toshiba's been our partner, title sponsor for the last 19 years. This is the 20th year. If you've read to anything about Toshiba in the last 18 months, they are an organization that's not very healthy. And so we are in preparation to look for new title sponsors. It does not look like they'll be able to continue past either 2018 or certainly 2019. We're visiting with, with sponsors. As Brian said, there's, there's a potential desire by Hoag Host- As Brian said, there's, there's a potential desire by Hoag Hospital as they grow their reach and become destination medicine and, and a large organization to be the title sponsor, but that would still require major sponsorship from other organizations. It's commercials, it's, it's, it's private business, it's, it's organizations that support it. We have about a 6.5 million dollar overall revenue goal each year, operating on about 4.4 million, I'm sorry, 5.4 million in, in costs. That includes purse and television and those kinds of things to raise 1.1 million. Toshiba's title sponsorship is about 3 million of that. So it's significant and that's across professional golf, but it's a significant portion of our funding that we would lose. We think we can make up a lot of that, but perhaps not all of it. And so city support would be meaningful.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on any of these items? I don't see any. We'll bring it back. I want to tell us to you while you're here, I appreciate your application. I, as you can tell, we're trying to wean some of these groups off of the funding. But that being said, I think it's appropriate to waive permit fees because that essentially is not cash donation from government to private entity, but is making it easy for you to do business in our city and you bring a large economic impact. So I would support amending this to include a complete waiver up to 15,000 dollars of city fees for the next, it says March, for the next year's tournament. And I don't know if anyone has any discussion or a second, but that's what I would be willing to do.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Second, Councilman Dixon. Councilman O'Neil.
All right. Is the motion to approve the entire staff report plus what you just said?
It is.
Okay. So, you know, unless, I don't think you need, do they need to keep sitting or standing, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please be seated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Unless you'd like.
Appreciate your time.
Oh, you have a request as well? I'm sorry. Go ahead and sit down. We'll, we'll have discussion, then I'll call you up again. I'm sorry, I must have not made myself clear if there's any other comments. I'll call you in a second. Yes.
Okay, sure, I'll go. So one of the things that we've been trying really hard to do is find, is, is to not use general fund money for items where restricted fund could be used. And all of the money that we're talking about tonight is coming from general fund. And it's, it's an interesting thing because one of the things that's going on with the Boat Parade is the partnership that they have with Visit Newport Beach. And one of the things that we've talked about many times from the dais right now is that we have a little over 500,000 dollars in a restricted fund where the money that would normally be general fund transient occupancy tax goes to Visit Newport Beach and then comes back as a restricted fund that would go toward community events, frankly, just like the Boat Parade and frankly, almost everything we've heard tonight. So given that that fund right now, the only thing we've been using it for is for the rotating sculpture garden and there is more than sufficient money for years of rotating sculpture garden, especially given that there's 150,000 dollars coming in every year, my suggestion would be to use the money that we're getting from Visit Newport Beach to fund the Boat Parade, which is entirely geared toward tourists, which then helps fund the transient occupancy tax going back in and then it's essentially a, a cycle. It does, and it frees up the general fund at 50,000 dollars a year. And this is something that isn't in the staff report. It's, it's something that I'm raising for the first time up here. So I'd like to at least open that up for discussion just a little bit up at the dais level. And if it's something that is appropriate, or at least we've got, it sounds like we've got support, I would offer up a friendly amendment that, that the money to be used for the, for the Boat Parade come out of the Visit Newport Beach Restricted Fund. And if for any reason that Visit Newport Beach Restricted Fund were to go away, then the money would come out of the general fund. So I would change, I would essentially just be changing the funding source of only that item.
I'll, I'll second that motion.
Well, so I'm, sorry.
Did you make a motion?
I didn't. I, I wanted to at least open it up for discussion and if.
Well, we need a motion and a second in order to discuss, don't we?
So there's a motion on the floor in a second?
So I would offer a friendly amendment to Mr., to Mayor Muldoon's motion that the, that the source of the funding for the Boat Parade come from the Visit Newport Beach Fund, Restricted Fund.
Can I second that motion? That friendly motion?
Yeah, I would accept that friendly amendment.
Okay. And councilmembers and Mr. Mayor, so this would be, what Mr. O'Neil is proposing is in the kind of a concept of a budget amendment for the record. So, and I understand it and it works fine if you're approving that today, but just for the record, there'll be a budget amendment document that reflects this action.
Sure, I would expect that, Mr. Kiff, because this is a, this is a funding, we've, we've changed the funding source multiple times during council meetings in the past and this is simply a, it, it does not change the contract, don't worry, Mr. Rosansky, I promise. It's simply from an administrative budgetary standpoint up at the dais level, we're, what we're trying to do is free up general fund money to use restricted fund money and given, given the source of that revenue, it seems phenomenal and appropriate for, for a tourist destination like this to be using it. So that's the explanation.
Thank you. And I concur. Councilman Pieter.
Can we clarify that? So you've got the motion as far as what we're approving and then you're requesting staff to come back with a budget amendment to try and be able to fund that out of the?
Actually, no, I, I apologize for being confusing. I was just stating for the record that what Mr. O'Neil is contemplating actually would be provided in backup as a budget document that would be, sorry, a budget amendment that would be part of the official record that would have been approved tonight verbally by your.
Okay, so you're not going to have to come back with something? You'll just do a budget.
Just trying to make sure it's clear for the record.
So I guess my question is, why couldn't we fund the, the entire special events and grant program with that same fund?
There, there is about, as Mr. O'Neil, as Councilman O'Neil is saying, there is about half a million dollars in there. If you wanted to do the entire program, that's about 300,000. You, you'd, you know, bring it down to 200,000, obviously that's the net. That would certainly be your choice. I do think there are, there are other proposed draws on those funds and that's why Mr. O'Neil's proposal is smaller, I think, and doesn't wipe, doesn't eliminate all the rest of those draws from that fund. I apologize for being obtuse.
This, this is the percentage that goes to, as a result of the development agreement fees?
No, sorry, no, this is the, this is the 150,000 per year that comes back to the city for general, actually for any purpose which you choose, but generally orientation was towards community programs. And it, we've been assigning it to the arts, to arts programs, but as Mr. O'Neil points out, actually, I don't know that much, if any, of it has been spent since it's been coming just a couple of years. What you're thinking of, Mr. Pieter, is the 2% developer fees that goes towards facilities. There's about 800,000 in that account.
Okay, so I guess the question stands, why wouldn't we want to fund the entire amount out of this, out of that account? And that would free up general funds that we can apply anywhere we wanted to.
I think that's a question for the council.
Mr. Mayor, may I clarify?
Yes, please do.
Do you mind, Mr. Pieter? Sure. The reason that I have offered only a portion of tonight's discussion on the item is because the Visit Newport Beach Fund that comes back through the transient occupancy tax as a restricted fund is 150,000 dollars each year. What we're looking at this evening is far more than that. And as well, we have said during study sessions that we would commit a fairly large chunk of that, approximately 100 to 125,000 dollars to the, to the Arts Commission for the rotating sculpture garden in the, at least this coming year and perhaps the year after. And so my, the reason I'm envisioning using a portion of that is simply because it would, while it would draw down just a bit on the 500,000 dollars that is currently in the fund, it would not draw down over the course of about two years, two or three years. And so that's why I've offered only 50,000 dollars, which is, especially given the, the nature of the TOT tax that comes back through the Boat Parade, appropriate.
All that being said, it's a smaller amount and it feeds itself because it'll generate more TOT. Okay, I'm, I don't have a problem with the 50,000 number staying there. The clarification then on Toshiba, the fee is 12,000 a year.
That's right.
Do we want to go ahead and place a number in the, it would be in the grant section, but they would only go up to the amount of the actual fees?
I think Mr., sorry, didn't mean to cut you off. Mr. Muldoon suggested up to 15,000, but reflective of the actual fees.
15,000 is fine. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Dixon.
Going back to the Visit Newport Beach funds, to clarify, Mr. O'Neil, are you saying 50,000 one time or during, for the life of this proposal? It's three years plus one year extension? Would you say 50,000 each year?
I did, because each year there would be another 150,000 dollars coming in from the Visit Newport Beach, from, from Visit Newport Beach. And that would be why I, I said if for any reason we modified that agreement, the money would come then from the general fund instead.
Okay, that's fine. I, I support that. I was, Mr. Kiff, I don't have the numbers in my head on what the Arts Commission is proposing for their programming, for example, the Concerts on the Green and some of the other things. Do you see that, are we taking away 50,000 from their expectation?
No, I think there is enough money to do what Mr. O'Neil is proposing and not impact the Arts Commission's programming.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Avery.
So, and I understand this is because of just the closeness, it's so appropriate given Visit Newport, what they're doing and what the, it's, the relationship is very close between the Christmas Parade and what we're trying to achieve here is more people coming down and funding. I get that and I support it. And I think it's astounding to me that we, and I'm sure there's reasons why I don't want to keep it, but Hoag is so worthy of city support in my view, just what a community partner and the fact that they are, you know, on the list. So I concur with the mayor completely on this and we've had this discussion before, but I think the whole idea of looking at the, the mix and what other organizations are worthy that we could look at and the funding side of it, everything, you know, down line could use more discussion and just to, to shake it up a little bit and bring out things like Hoag. It's great that we can support them in this. Huge community partner and surprising they're not on the list. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Pieter.
And one more clarification. I know staff changed the recommendation from three years with an automatic one-year. I have a, I don't have a problem with the Boat Parade, but I have a problem locking in future councils for that long. They're funded through 17 already. We're extending the agreement so it'll be for 18, 19, and 20. And my preference would be to do a three-year with an optional one-year at the option of the council at the time. So it'll have to actually be activated. So rather than it being automatic, I would propose that it would be at, at the request of the council.
So it's a second request for an amendment and is it acceptable?
I'll make it as a friendly amendment if, if the maker of the motion's acceptable.
That's right, and I, I find acceptable and procedurally acceptable as well, correct?
It's at the request of the future council or?
Right, so it would not be an automatic extension, it would be at the option of the council.
So it's active, not passive.
It'll require an affirmative vote?
Correct.
Thank you. Yeah, I find that acceptable.
And there's no issue from, from a procedural standpoint?
Thank you. Sir, a second?
I second.
Any other?
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Dixon, you were the second.
Well, I have a question. I did that original second? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, you did.
Okay, well, I don't know if I am going to be seconding until I get an answer to my question, but Mr. Avery's ahead of me.
Well, let's, let's solve this procedurally before we move on.
Well, I just wanted to ask Mr. Rosansky, you had said in your comments that from, it was important to have four years?
Well, yes, I believe it is because, you know, we're out here basically selling the Boat Parade to sponsors and other organizations in the community to help invest with us. The longer the agreement, the more security we have for the parade in its existing form. Without the 50,000 dollars a year, we'd have to severely cut back the parade. And I might add that it sort of doesn't make sense to have an option in because at that point, I'm going to just come back and ask for another three or four years if I'm going to ask for a one-year extension. So I, I think that the idea was that, you know, we, we were hoping for five, you know, I probably was hoping a lot more than I, than reality was going to dictate, but I thought four years, I mean, it's similar to what the existing agreement is. The existing agreement is four years and it did allow for an opt-out. So if there is a future council that doesn't want to make the appropriation, because it would be done at a meeting just like this, they could clearly say, well, we opt-out and we're not going to appropriate the funds that year for it. So I, you know, it's kind of approaching it from a different direction, but it, it does put at least in place the, the four years there and, you know, if I kind of noodled what, you know, as far as councils go and things like that and who's going to be there, I mean, it's hard to say who's going to be there in the future and not.
Thank you.
You know, well, I mean, some of you may not want to be there, I don't know. But some of you may be there a long time. But, you know, in any event, I'll be coming back at the end of probably the three years because I know I only have one year left, the option year, and asking for an extension of that agreement because it's that important to the parade. So I would urge you to reconsider and, and vote as staff has teed it up for you and recommended. I think that that obviously would, would be beneficial to the parade and I think it makes sense for the city as well.
Since I still have the fourth, thank you, Mr. Rosansky. I would not support the revised motion, so my, I pull my second from that revised motion and I want to retain the automatic on the fourth year. And if future council can withdraw that, they have the option, like any policy, to change. But to give the security stabilization of that for sponsorships, I think that is important and has merit. Thank you.
Thank you. So as a point of order, I understand that the maker of the motion has to, has to consent to an amended, to amendment, which I did consent to. Does it have to be a seconded by the original seconder or can it be?
I'd be glad to, I'd be glad to second the motion as amended.
It might be better just to do a substitute motion if you still want to have it considered, just do a substitute motion and then have that seconded. That would be clean for, for purposes of the record. So substitute motion and then have that seconded.
Mr. Mayor, as a point of order, may I make a suggestion? I'd suggest that, that motion, that, that the offer of a friendly amendment actually be offered as an amendment to the, the motion, only because what it allows us to do is to, to vote.
Separate.
Separately. And if for some reason, if it succeeds, we then vote with the entire motion as it is, or if it fails, then we go back to the original motion and determine whether to go with the staff recommendation with the amendments that we've already produced, proposed, or to go with the, with, with Mr. Pieter's.
Yeah, I'll make, I'll make a motion then to amend the current motion on the table to delete the, or take that fourth year and make it at the option of the council.
So Councilman O'Neil's completely correct, that's another way to get there, but you still need a second for that amendment then. And then you'd vote on the, just the amendment and then you'd vote on the regular motion.
So a motion is on?
Okay. So here's what I'm going to do. Sir Pieter, you are amending your prior motion to be?
I'm amending your motion to change that fourth year from an automatic to make it at the option of the council.
Okay. Is there a second? I'm avoiding a headache, I'm going to, I'm not going to second it. I'm going to keep it, keep it clean. I think it's a great idea, I just don't think the support's there. Before we vote on, and I'm going to go out to the public one more time for the two individuals who wish to address us. I saw that prior in the queue there were requests to speak, are those requests withdrawn? Thank you. Okay. So I think I know what's going on at this point. Would you gentlemen like to please address the council? I'm sorry that there's confusion as far as that window opportunity.
Yes, Mayor Muldoon and fellow councilmembers, my name is Daniel Hodge. I'm a 50-year resident of Newport Beach and the current Commodore of NOSA, Newport Ocean Sailing Association. I'm sure all of you are familiar with the iconic Newport to Ensenada race. You have supported us for 70 years now and we like to keep that relationship going forward and, and we're asking for your support going forward. So any other questions that you may have for me?
I see that there's a request for support and granted in the motion that would include 10,000 dollars, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So essentially you're asking for the staff report to be confirmed?
Yes, sir.
Excellent. Thank you so much and thank you for the great event you do every year.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other requests or comments? All right, seeing none, bring it back. So I made the original motion that would add up to 15,000 dollars in fee waiver.
Actually, Tara has a couple of just clarifying comments. If I could turn that to Tara?
I just wanted to confirm that the council's motion included the extra seventeen hundred dollars for the Field of Honor event. I wasn't sure about that. And as well, if you would like us to come back with the program changes, perhaps sometimes later this summer and the fall. And I had one more that I can't remember at this time, so I apologize. That's it. I know what it was, I'm sorry. It was, I understand that you would like to give Toshiba up to fifteen thousand dollars in fee credits, so therefore, we've moved them into the community and charitable category. That was my final clarification. Yes?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Thanks.
Regarding the desire to come back for another date, is there a request for that from the dais, or are we okay with doing this on a annual basis?
Sorry, yeah, it's a policy about special events in the future, and Tara's request is that you not consider that tonight, and you allow staff, and actually, Mr. Pieter and Ms. Dixon have been working on that with us as a little working group, and if you're, that's what we would do if you agree to not approve item E.
I don't see an objection to that. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, E would not be part of the motion?
Okay. Let's vote.
The motion carries unanimously, six-zero.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council, either this meeting or the previous meeting, may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Any motions to reconsider? Seeing none, we have two adjournments in memory of Newport Beach residents who have passed. Mr. Kiff, I'll let you do the honor of the memory of Eleanor Todd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Eleanor Todd, a longtime Newport Beach resident and a fourteen-year member of the Citizens Aviation Committee. Fourteen years is a long time to be on that committee. Eleanor passed away earlier this month. She was born and raised in Los Angeles, but spent many summers on Balboa Island. In her two thousand and three application to join the committee, she explained just how familiar was she was with Newport Beach, writing, "I'm a native Angelino and spent my summers with my parents on Balboa Island, dining at the Hurley Bell, buying ceramics at Kay Finch's, and dancing to Stan Kenton at the Rendezvous Ballroom." Eleanor moved to Newport Beach in the early nineteen seventies and learned to fly in nineteen seventy-four at the then Orange County Airport. She went on to own her own plane and work as a commercial pilot and flight instructor. She was a member of numerous aviation-related organizations, including the Ninety-Nines, International Women in Aviation, the Experimental Aircraft Association, and the Aircraft Owners and Pilots Association. In nineteen eighty-two, she was named Woman Pilot of the Year by the Southwest Section of the Ninety-Nines. When Eleanor was not flying, she was leading tours at John Wayne Airport. In nineteen ninety-nine, she was recognized by the Board of Supervisors for her volunteer work at John Wayne. She was preceded in death by her husband, Orange County Superior Court Judge Robert Todd. She is survived by her three sons and their families. We will deeply miss her as a resident and as a committee member.
Thank you, Mr. Kiff. On July fourth, a very fitting day to lose this man, we lost Dale Dykema. Dale was born April fourteenth, nineteen thirty, in Grand Rapids, Michigan, and served United States Air Force during the Korean War. Dale served four years in the Air Force, leaving as a Staff Sergeant, then earned his bachelor's degree at Calvin College in Grand Rapids in nineteen fifty-six, and an MBA from University of Michigan in nineteen fifty-seven, when he moved to Southern California. Dale and his wife Sandy lived here in Newport Beach. He is survived by Sandy, son's Rick, Dean Dykema, daughter Dawn Farrell, four grandchildren, and two great-grandchildren. I am proud to say that Dale Dykema was a friend. We adjourn their memory.